Jim Groch. He is a nice guy.
He said the same thing about you.
We know each other for. Oh my God. We two.
Yeah, he was at the.
Thank you.
He was looking.
I'm really hopeful. He's. He's been working really hard.
This territory.
Oh, it's bad. His good fortune lies. He grew up in Nebraska. I should have gone. It's seventy-five. All this time. I'm Louie there. Yeah. Yeah. Of course. Or if he has to. We can use our turn on.
I don't know our parents.
Stace, are we close?
I knew you were getting this far. Yeah, I appreciate that.
Fortunately, we're already out there. Nope, never mind.
Good evening. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, November first, two thousand twenty-two, six o'clock. Uh, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would stand for that. Father Tom Jones fell ill this evening, so he will.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take roll call, please?
Yes. Councilman Casey.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall, rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of agenda consent agenda claims and advisory committee reports, five A, approval of the agenda. Council, it's Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion. We approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
Councilman Casey, is yours coming through?
I'll vote yes, but I don't have anything popping up here.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item five B, approval of the consent agenda items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
Just a second. I'm still trying to catch up from the last time. Should be coming.
Still have the loading action wheel on mine.
All the other votes are in. The only one, up there goes. All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven, we have no special presentations this evening. Item eight, no organizational matters. Item nine, approved citizen communications. We did not receive any. Item ten, we did not receive any liquor licenses. Item eleven, ordinances for adoption, third reading, eleven A, ordinance number four one one zero, updated compensation ordinance to reflect change in pay range for employees that are unclassified and employees covered by Bellevue Professional Firefighters Association. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number forty-one-ten, an ordinance of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, classifying the employees of the city, fixing the ranges of compensation of such employees, providing a pay range schedule, providing for publication in pamphlet form, repealing ordinance number four zero nine seven, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. And do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we approve ordinance number four one one zero.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Burns. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item twelve, uh, we have no ordinances for public hearing, second reading this evening. Item thirteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading, thirteen A, ordinance number four one one one, and ordinance to redefine ward boundaries due to the two thousand twenty-two annexations. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one one one, an ordinance to amend section nine dash three of the Bellevue Municipal Code to provide for revised city council ward boundaries, to repeal section nine dash three of the Bellevue Municipal Code as heretofore existing and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. Second reading and public hearing will be November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. Item fourteen has been withdrawn by the applicant. So we will go to item fifteen, resolutions, fifteen A, resolution two zero two two dash three one, approval to operate a satellite Keno location at the business operated, operated by Moran's Grill LLC, doing business as Moran's Grill at thirty-nine oh nine Twin Creek Drive, number one oh five, Bellevue, Nebraska, and authorize mayor to sign. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion. We approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-one.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fifteen B, resolution two zero two two dash three two, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the annual year-end certification of city street superintendent form for two thousand twenty-two, verifying Robert Joseph Riggs as the city street superintendent from January one, two thousand twenty-two to December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two. And do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we approve resolution number two zero two two dash three two.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Casey. Any questions, discussion? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fifteen C, resolution two zero two two dash three three, a resolution updating various fees of the master fee schedule effective November second, two thousand twenty-two. And do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion. We approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-three.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by McCaw. Discussion or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fifteen D, resolution two zero two two dash three four, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the locally funded construction engineering services agreement with Alfred Benish and Company for the major street resurfacing project identified as MAPPA five oh eight one two. And do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we approve resolution two zero two two dash three four.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fifteen E, resolution two zero two two dash three five, approve and authorize the mayor to sign supplemental agreement number one to the original construction engineering services agreement with Alfred Benish, Benish and Company for the major street resurfacing project dated August second, two thousand twenty-two. And do I have motion? Councilwoman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve item fifteen E, resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-five, twenty twenty-two dash thirty-five. Getting ahead of the years here.
Second.
Motion by Preister, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fifteen F, resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-six, approve and authorize the mayor and city treasurer to open accounts in the name of the city to sign and endorse checks and orders for the payment of money or otherwise withdraw or transfer funds on deposit with the financial institution. A motion? Councilman, Councilwoman Welch then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item fifteen F, also known as resolution two zero two two dash three six.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Casey. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen, current business, sixteen A, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum of standing with the Bellevue Professional Management Association for the term October one, two thousand twenty-two through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion. We approve sixteen A.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen B, approved purchase of cellphone forensic software license with Celibite Inc. in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. And do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we approve item sixteen B.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Burns. Comments or questions? Please vote.
Isn't that coming? There it goes. All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen C, approve and authorize mayor to sign Nebraska medicine training affiliation agreement to allow our providers to work clinically at Nebraska medicine locations for educational services. Do I have a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve item sixteen C.
I'll second that.
Motion by Casey, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen D, approve and authorize mayor to sign quote from Qtel to purchase upgrade evidence software and scanner for the police department in an amount not to exceed sixteen thousand two hundred ninety-nine dollars. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion. We approve sixteen D.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Casey. Any discussion, questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen E, recommendation to approve and authorize the mayor to sign contract with H D R to assist with the application for a grant to develop a master, a master plan for all signalized intersections within the city in an amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I happily approve the energy efficiency of sixteen E.
Second.
Is that a happy second?
The happy, uh.
Very happy second.
Motion by Preister and very happy second by Burns and Speedy as well. Any comments or questions?
Keep traffic moving.
Please vote.
Hook came up twice. Can you vote twice?
It won't vote twice.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen F, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the proposal with Midwest Right Away Services, Inc. to evaluate potential properties to purchase for the construction of a public works facility within the city in an amount not to exceed ten thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion to approve item sixteen F. Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen G, approve and authorize the mayor to sign First Amendment to Agreement with Rogers Towing and the First Amendment to Agreement with Auto Body Authority Towing and Impound, Inc. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion. We approve sixteen G.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Please vote. Oh, sorry. Any comments, questions first? All right. Please vote now.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. Item seventeen, administration reports. Comments must be limited to items on the current reports. Monthly report is given at the first council meeting of each month. October report is attached to council packets. Is there any questions on the reports? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. One question, and maybe it's for Mr. Clark, but we've got a request on there about a, a new fiber request. It doesn't have any real information, but a vendor for fiber and we've, we approved ALO last meeting, I believe, and Verizon is up in my area working and Century Link is working. I'm just hearing from people about how many people are going to be digging and trenching, and it looks like maybe another one.
If Fast, Fast Wire is already in, um, Doug, do you have any more? Actually, maybe Jim.
Maybe.
Let me pre, preface it. We've had communications, but we, they're, they're, uh, this is what it's pertaining to. We have communications from other fiber companies as well, so we're not at liberty.
And maybe that specific one, but.
Let me talk, pass it to Jim.
Yeah, I think you're concerned that we do have another, another provider that is looking at our market. And what we'd like to be able to do is like coordinate with the current ones that are already in, if, if they're going in the front or the rear and that they drop at the same time. So we're trying to expedite through that, but we have a lot of work to do on, on this additional vendor. Fast Wire is going through the front of the right of ways.
Right.
ALO will probably go through the back and either in ground or above. This next provider will probably do both, but we would like to do is be able to make sure that we've got them in the same trench, so we don't have multiple digs or multiple runs. So we are working, we're working pretty expeditiously with this other provider, so.
And, and I think that's the issue. It's, we get one done and then another construction crew is coming through the neighborhood and disrupting the yards and the neighbors. And people want the alternatives. They want choice of providers, but they don't like all the construction that's going underground and through their yards. And so yeah, somehow coordinating, I don't know if they could do one trench with a big pipe and put everything through it and take it in and out, but they probably wouldn't cooperate to do that. But the concern is the continual digging and disruption and one getting done and then another, so.
And we're really sensitive to that, so it's, that's on the top of our radar.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So while we're on this subject, I, I have not had any real complaints from, uh, I think Fast Wire is out and about. I've heard some good compliments. Is there any real complaints out there, some that, that are outstanding or that?
I don't know if Fast Wire is in my area, but I have had some complaints on the other ones that are there now.
Okay.
And I, it's been going back a while because it's been going on for a whole year.
Okay, so if you do get the complaints as city council members, just, uh, make sure Jim knows about them so you can get in contact with the provider. Any other questions? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I want to talk about the Sarpy County Museum because Mr. Risto and I had a meeting with regards to that, and there is some misinformation that's out there. When this whole project started, there was eight to nine RFPs that were submitted to, uh, the museum for their, um, decision, and they hired a independent company to, a project manager to review these RFPs. They narrowed those RFPs down to three, of which one of them was in Bellevue. Now, with regards to that, um, that particular, um, RFP was a developer that actually brought the collection, the Wimmer collection, to the city of Bellevue to bring it to their attention. And this developer is um, not, he's not friends, he's very well invested within our city. Um, during that RFP, the, uh, developer offered a million dollars in incentives to, uh, the museum, and then, uh, the city with council approval said that they would be offering half a million dollars in incentives to be able to get the museum brought to the original place of the railroad. Now, it's also in the, uh, a publication that I received that said, you know, I am the liaison between the city and the Sarpy County Museum, and the fact that, uh, I said that everything was fine, but yet I wasn't able to attend their executive meetings. Part of that is because there was a conflict of interest with regards to that. If they allowed me to come in, they should allow, uh, the other city that was looking at this. And so, um, the decision was announced, and I noticed, um, Councilman Burns, that you had that, you know, an article about this in your, in your paper. When did, when did you receive the information that the, that that was announced for, oh, for everyone to know about that?
First, I'm kind of confused as to what you mean by what information. The second thing is, is I think that you're actually bringing campaign material into a council meeting and discussing it, and I don't know the ramifications of that.
I don't know what the ramifications of that, but, um, administration reports are typically to make comments about the reports um, and not necessarily direct questions back to city council members. I don't think any council member has a duty to answer a question. It's more for comments on the report.
Okay. Well, again, it was, there was information that was, that was put out there that is incorrect, and I wanted to make sure that that information was clarified with regards to all of this. I found out about where the museum was going through a phone call that had been put up on social media as well. And so, um, Mr. Risto and I had that discussion after I had found out that particular information. So I wanted to just clarify some information that had gotten out there, so.
Councilman Cook?
I'm, I'm just going to add a comment to that. Um, and it is on our city administrator's report. I believe all council members, or I, I believe all council members were given an option or at least a request if they'd like to see the collection, and some people went there. This Harpy County Museum has been in Bellevue since day one. I don't know where the disconnect is, but I'm very concerned that there was not more discussion and involvement with the museum and their board and our city council, at least with our mayor and our city administrator. I don't know how we go from a, I will tell you what I know is I get invited to go see the display, part of the display. I take the time to do it. I know that there's RFPs coming out. I thought that it would probably stay in Bellevue. I think it re, should remain in Bellevue. It's been in Bellevue since day one. And I don't know what occurred, how it occurred, but I think it was somewhat disrespectful by not having the city of Bellevue involved in more talks and more discussion about the relocation of the museum. So I'll leave it at that. I sure hope people on that board get this message from us, but I, I, I don't think it was the right way to treat the city of Bellevue with a commitment that we've had to that museum for probably thirty or forty years, so it's very, uh, disappointing that there was not more communication with the city of Bellevue. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I also wanted to add that, you know, I felt like the developer did, you know, the developer and the city did everything they possibly could to try and keep this in the city of Bellevue. So it, what, I mean, we put our best foot forward to say, please stay in Bellevue, and a decision was made otherwise.
Jim, can you answer when that RFP was received by the city, um, for that?
So the city actually never received the RFP. We just saw it out in a public forum. And when we saw that, um, knowing that the developer that worked with the Wimmer family to bring them to the museum, we thought he would be interested in a discussion, so I forwarded that over to him and said, I think we could probably put one of, one of your sites up. And based on what the RP, RFP was calling for, it truly was probably one of the best sites to put that on. Because long-term, what we were thinking in that same area was if the museum did land there, we'd like to put a annex, a library, an annex library in the same site. Uh, and he was actually drafting on that. So when the developer got that piece, he hired an architect, did all the renderings for how this would develop on his site. Uh, we met a couple of times. We talked about his incentive to the museum and then what our commitment would be for an incentive. And again, always contingent on council approval, but we had some discussions about what we thought we could take out of our community betterment funds and, and add that into it. So, so we put our best site forward, the one that met the RFP, and then put some pretty decent incentives in there for play. But the city never actually officially received anything asking us. Uh, we just saw it out there, so. And I'm not sure who they, who they targeted or how they targeted it. It was just, it was.
From what I understand, though, there was no questions or anything, or was there even a presentation asked of, uh, that site?
No, that's why we, we put Kathy in that role is to keep apprised of it. So if there were discussions, and then we went back to the developer when it was announced, there was no follow-up discussion with him either as far as if there were site concerns or if there were incentive concerns, anything that we could have answered through that process, there was no follow-up.
And what, what they, what they shared with me, Mr. Mayor, was that they did not talk to the three remaining RFPs. They just went and did a site evaluation. And I knew there was a communication breakdown between the city and the Sarpy County Museum, so I jumped in to create that layout liaison position to help, um, get that communication back on track. Any one of the other council members could have done that as well, but I saw it as something that we need to do that was important to, to really work on keeping the museum. that was important to, to really work on keeping the museum. And then, you know, I also talked to a lot of people to say, let's go look at this museum, because if we're going to have it in our city, let's make sure that people see what the collection looks like, what this whole thing is. And we actually, you know, took a trip down there on a Saturday, and I think you had been there several times yourself.
Okay, I appreciate your involvement in that, though, so, well, it should have been helpful. I guess I'm kind of disappointed that it wasn't brought back with questions. I mean, when you've got a developer who is a friend of the city, he's invested millions of dollars in the city, owns Trigarian Golf Course, he's developed Twin Creek, he's got several large buildings, he was in on the convention center, so it'd just be nice for some professional, as professional adequate, just to at least say, you know, this doesn't work for us, or some kind of communication. But I just want you to know, he, he, he put a lot of work, a lot of money into that RFP, and...
He really wanted this project, because he and I talked back and forth several times during this whole process to see, you know, what, what could he do to refine it, what could he do to make it better, what could he do to entice, what could he do to keep the project there? I mean, he had a vested interest in, in making it work in Bellevue.
I've had a lot of experience at RFPs process, and yeah, this just seems like it was predetermined, or there's something different going on. But anyway, thanks for the discussion, good discussion. Any other comments on the reports? All right, we will file those, there is no closed session, and I'll take a motion to adjourn. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Please vote.
Take a sec, jumped away. All voting yes. Motion carries.